Okay, also.
Great. Well, welcome everyone. Yet another subcommittee. And this one's been long and necessary and long in coming to the forefront here. As we all know, and we've all discussed on many an occasion during various applications and various hearings, there issues with the zoning regulations as they currently stand. It needs a cleanup. It needs a refresh. It needs to be updated. It's been way too long. So this subcommittee's role is going to be to help shepherd that process over the next year, probably more than a year, possibly two years. It'll be it'll be a long process, but it'll be as thorough as possible to try and refine and reinvent as necessary our zoning regulations so that we are reflecting all the all the most appropriate amendments and corrections that we've all discussed at various meetings of where the deficiencies in the current regulations lie. Our our goal is going to be to review those, discuss them, and help work with a consultant to put together a new zoning regulation. We will be sending out an RFP for a consultant's services to work on work with us on a new zoning regulation. Sarah has already started a draft of that one. We'll all get to review the RFP before it goes out. And then, as soon as we can get that consultant on board, we will we will start meetings with them. They'll be periodic at this point, probably once a month in the beginning until until the consultant comes up with a good game plan for how we're going to structure the development of the zoning regulations and the refinement over the next year or two. So with all that said, you know, I appreciate everyone raising their hand to be to be on this subcommittee. I know it's additional time and effort above and beyond our typical planning and zoning commitments. As you can tell, I'm I'm a I'm away. Tom Benton's away, but trying our best to stay part and stay involved. So with that said, I see there's there's three of you there at the meeting. It's myself and Tom on the phone. I know that John Engel also expressed interest in being on the committee or in the subcommittee. The goal was to have five members on the subcommittee in order to keep it an odd number so that any votes would not end up in a tie. So with that said, if John Engel is still interested and does show up or continues to show interest, we would ask that I would ask that one of the committee members be a an alternate. This is the same way we functioned on the P O C D where I was not the chair and I was the alternate on the subcommittee. I still attended the meetings. The alternate would still attend the meetings, still contribute to the discussion, still be part of the discussion. But when it came down to vote on something, if there was not a if if there was a full subcommittee of five members, then that alternate would not vote. But in the same way as we, you know, treated it with the with the P O C D subcommittee, if there was not a full five members there for the vote, the alternate would get to vote on the issue at hand. So that's kind of my intro. Again, I thank you all for raising your hand to be part of this. I think it's an important just like the P O C D. I think this is a really important milestone in New Canaan's planning and zoning history. As we all know, you know, the zoning regulations don't really get changed very often. And by the time we finalize this iteration of the zoning regulations, it will have been a 20-year window since the last revision, major revision. That was in 2007. So that being said, we do have an agenda that Sarah had put together. You all did receive the email. We have just a few minor items on here, right? We're talking about the election of the chair. That's the first item. And I did I did raise my hand to be chair if that, you know, that that's acceptable, but we would need someone to make the nomination and second and vote on that. So we can start there.
This is Commissioner Chris. I would nominate Daniel Radman as chairman of the zoning regulations subcommittee.
Great. Thank you, John. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Sarah, anything further needed on that? Do we need a full vote or?
All in favor.
Yeah, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Looks like Tom's having some connectivity issues, but I'll count that as four votes, so.
Okay.
Passes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate your vote of confidence. So Sarah, do you want to take over on just describing our next steps, the RFP and getting consultant on board?
Yep. So before I get into that really quickly, I would just like to show you all a map that I just had our consultant tie and bond, who's our G I S consultant make. If you have a computer in front of you, you can also access it yourself. If you go to the town's website on the main page, if you scroll down to the calendar and where tonight's meeting is listed.
Main page for planning and zoning.
No, for just newcanon.info. If you go to our meeting under calendar for tonight, there is a document that just says structure age. Click here. And so you can pull up the map yourself.
Are you gonna pull it up? Are you gonna pull it up on screen?
Yep. But so people can look at it themselves also because it's kind of hard to see. So basically, this is a map that shows the age of the structures of every the age of the structures for every parcel in New Canaan. And it's broken up into categories of if it was built before we had zoning regulations, which we got zoning regulations in 1932. So that's why it's 1931 or older. And then it goes decade by decade. And then basically, we have this 1991 to 2004 category because in 2005, that's when we had our most recent update. So, you know, I think this will be a helpful map as we get further and further into the process, you know, as we look at various neighborhoods. You know, just some interesting highlights of things that we'll kind of delve into further down the road, but you look at a neighborhood like White Farm, Middle Ridge, none of those houses have been touched since they were built in the 80s and 90s. But then you look at a street like Douglas, where it was mostly developed in the 40s and 50s. You have all these homes that have been built in the last 10, 15 years, but you go a few streets over to Crystal Street and half, most of the houses are from before 1931 and not much development has gone on. So just interesting things to look at down the road. And, you know, just some highlights of some math I did very quickly based on this data. And this is all coming from tax assessor data. Just very interesting things to quickly think about. There are 7,557 structures on this map. 748 of them were constructed under our current zoning regulations. So under 10% of the structures in New Canaan were you were constructed using our current regulations. 1,032 of them are from before we ever even had zoning regulations. And 43% of all structures in New Canaan were built between 1950 and 1979. So interesting stuff to keep in mind. And I would just say, you know, as we go into this process, our current regulations are not what made New Canaan what it is. And so, you know, they're it's okay to change things.
Just to clarify, something that's been renovated would still show up as the original age, something that's been torn down, rebuilt could be showing the age of the demolition and construction.
That's correct. So, you know, not perfect data, but, you know, gives you a decent you know, starting point.
Another thing I would say, just looking at this at a high level and quickly is that, I mean, this is what I think a ex-urban development pattern would look like is that you've had these larger parcels of land that developed a while ago and probably were bigger, even bigger pieces and then subdivided off over time. Time because it's not like there's a single area. I mean, downtown certainly has some of the oldest, but you see older housing stocks spread throughout the town, which is probably original homesteads or farmsteads or whatnot that later subdivided and developed. So it's interesting to see that.
There are any number of, I know, houses with a metal with a brass plaque in front saying, you know, built 1,700 something, which have been often beautifully renovated, but are certainly are older buildings. So given the town that were 200 years old, I wouldn't have surprised if or anything other than this bit of a hodgepodge, frankly.
So anyways, on to the main event, just, you know, something to keep in mind and we will be able to.
I just want to add to something that Sarah just said that our current zoning regulations aren't exactly what made New Canaan what it is. But it is important to note that our current zoning regulations have done a pretty good job of maintaining the quaint New England character of the town that we have. And our role with the new zoning regulations is to try and keep that legacy going so that we we maintain a certain oversight on the development of the town to keep the character that we have. Just my two.
Chairman, I would agree that, you know, the current regulations didn't make New Canaan, but the regulations since 1930 have. And each was a bit different. And, you know, when I think about the task before us, it's a very serious task that the work we do here in this subcommittee and more broadly in the commission on this topic is going to have significant effects on the development of our town probably for several decades to come. Given that we're doing a stem to stern review of the housing of the regulations. And again, we don't do that every year. The last relatively substantial was 20 years ago. So this is this is serious stuff. And, you know, I'm I'm have that grave responsibility in my mind when I think about what the task before us the next year or two. Serious.
Yeah. And I think just to piggyback off that, you know, the Connecticut, the New England, Connecticut sort of, you know, historical small town feel, I think we have to also counterbalance that with this is the 21st century. Things are changing and families are different than what they may have looked at, looked like 60 years ago. And where are people coming from to our town? Why are they attracted to New Canaan schools? The feel. But there are, you know, there are changing tendencies in how people live and and, you know, what they need to do. And I think you know, that needs to be considered. I mean, we've talked a lot about walkability and the interest of additional density in downtown area and how that can contribute to walkability. Affordability, I think, is a big thing to consider as well, and also needs to be, I think, heavily considered as we go through these changes. And, you know, moving forward, you know, there is sustainability, right? I don't think it's a question about global warming. I think that's real. I think everybody knows that's real, or at least, you know, it's hard. It's hard. It's hard to question science for those who believe in science. And so I, you know, sustainable development needs to be, you know, I think, considered heavily in the way we promote, you know, the new types of development and renovations moving forward.
Great. So next steps for tonight, basically, I'm going to go through a short presentation of what the process should look like or will look like over the next couple of months, review what I have done along with Stephen in my department over the last few months to get to this point. And then essentially what I will eventually get to and what the main discussion of tonight is going to be is, you know, I've drafted an RFP, but before I can send that out, we need to make sure that we're all on the same page about what the goals of this process are. So I've listed out 10 key goals that I think should be included in the RFP, looking for consensus or, you know, reasons why we shouldn't include these things in the RFP. As well as talking about the scope of the subcommittee, which are all topics Dan has covered, but I'll just provide a little more context on. But so main discussion will be about goals and if you want to follow along, I also have this presentation posted online where you guys just clicked on the map. There's a different thing. And basically, as I go through each goal, I do have an example for each goal. We don't have to go through them. It's just if you guys need more context, we can go through it. So it is like a 25 slide presentation, but I don't have to go through all of them if they're not needed. So as Dan talked about, we need to issue an RFP from there. We may have to conduct interviews for a consultant if we get a lot of qualified responses that we need, you know, to really dig into kind of similar to what we did for the P O C D. We did have to interview two final consultants. So that may or may not happen. You know, after that, we'll get a contract, eventually sign it. Once, you know, we're all on the same page about public engagement strategy, flexibility in the contract, that sort of thing. We'll kick off the process, you know, depending on timing, if it's getting close to the summer, we won't obviously be doing big public engagement in the summer, but that doesn't mean we can't start working on a lot of behind the scenes stuff to get ready for more public engagement. So I don't want to slow down just because it's the summer. There are definitely many things we can do that don't involve, you know, making big decisions when people aren't around. And then, yeah, as Dan said, expect one to two years to get everything finalized. Hoping we could do it in a year, but the last one took four years, so two may be a better guess. So today, myself and Stephen have done a comprehensive review of our existing regulations and the P O C D, which we just adopted. We have identified, and, you know, I kind of, I sent you guys that document on Friday, which was my abridged version of our markup of the zoning regulations. You know, we've identified regulations with procedural issues, things that cause neighbor disputes, things that are unclear. We've tried to trace back the original date of various regulations. Like fun fact, half of our special permit criteria are from 1959. So, you know, we've identified things that have just been, you know, carried over decade after decade. Is it time to evaluate them? Probably. Created a list of definitions to be removed, added, or clarified. And, you know, we've just further refined the P O C D action steps that we think are relevant that a consultant will need to evaluate. And then, like I said, I drafted an RFP that would like to further refine after a discussion tonight, and it's looking like we'll have a budget of about $100,000 for this review, which are for the consultant, which I think is a healthy budget. I'm not worried about. So then briefly, the scope of the subcommittee, it's going to be very similar, I think, to the P O C D subcommittee where, you know, behind the scenes, myself and the consultant are doing most of the heavy lifting. It's just, you know, when there are controversial things or just once we, you know, get further into the process, we'll need feedback from you all. Are we on the right track? Are we on the completely wrong track? You know, I would just say, keep an open mind and nothing's final until you guys vote on it at the end. So, you know, there will just be ideas thrown out that you know, may get, you know, knocked down right away. But that's, you know, part of the process.
Commissioner Cruz, I just note that the changes to our our zoning regulations is the zoning commission acting in its legislative capacity.
Yep.
And that gives us wide latitude, more so than in an application. So.
Yep. And so you guys will also, you know, assist and, you know, somewhat manage public feedback. You know, just kind of navigating the public feedback we do receive. You know, what do you agree with? What do you not agree with? What do we need to, you know, look further into? Which means you'll have to attend public hearings and workshops that we will have down the road. And then you know, we're kind of toying with the idea of having some sort of stakeholder focus group, which if we did something like that, you know, it would be you all working with the stakeholder group to get their feedback.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea. I think just because, you know, we see so little of zoning in the town, this this commission, right? That the bulk of it is is you, it's building apartment, it's it's zoning, it's day-to-day operations of hours of right zoning, it's not discretionary approval. So to be able to get developers, practitioners, architects, attorneys to weigh in on, you know, what their, you know, clients face in terms of, you know, building, you know, building a single family home or building a multifamily home or commercial development. You know, that's, I think, very, very important to our work.
In addition to that, I mean, I can think of a number of topics such as, you know, should there be special zoning rules for our historic district? And, you know, I certainly would want the historic commission to be able to weigh in on that as well as other historic advocacy groups. I think also of our downtown area, I know the Chamber of Commerce would want to weigh in as well as business people. And so I would welcome their their input. So there are a couple of topics that were sort of sort of easy ones to pick for that type of approach. We did something like that on the P O C D and we had a lot of input and it was, I think, very useful. So my own experience.
Plus. So I think I think we have an opportunity here to not only tackle both of those points, but also we have an opportunity to to combine and reconcile the different packages of regulations we have, meaning we have our primary planning and zoning regulations that we go by, you know, month to month. We also have a separate subdivision regulation. We also have a separate village district guidelines. So there's there's other elements to the zoning formula in town that are, they exist and they're they're there for everyone to see. But I think this is going to be a great opportunity and maybe combine all of that into a single planning and zoning document that could help inform all, you know, whether it's a residential applicant or a commercial applicant, give them the full picture of what they're up against.
Okay, so hopefully you guys can read this. I can zoom in if needed, but these are the goals that myself and Stephen, you know, in our day-to-day work of living and breathing the town of New Canaan zoning regulations have kind of come up with for this. You know, regulation update. So I think the best approach would just be to go one by one. Talk about them if we need to, but these are the 10 goals that I think should be included in the RFP upfront that the consultant know about. And again, I have examples for each goal if we need them, but if we don't need them, I won't go through them. So first one is remove and change regulations that are inconsistent with state statute and relevant case law.
No brainer. My view.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we accomplish nothing else, we have to do that.
Okay.
I agree.
So then the second one is clarify inconsistencies, unclear language, and outdated requirements in regulations.
I would say same thing.
Yeah.
No brainer.
Review and update what triggers commission reviews to lower caseload for the planning and zoning commission.
You know, and other potential commissions or boards that may have zoning power.
Okay.
And if and if there is, again, I think I had mentioned at previous meetings, and if there's anything that the CBA can potentially in terms of the lowering of the caseload. You know, I don't know. I was looking at the other day, I think they have what, six cases this year, seven cases this year, and we have six or seven hearing. So is there any avenue to transferring some of the caseload, whether it be a lesser degree of a special permit or something, but to consider, you know, the work going to other, you know, constituted boards that have the capacity to handle it.
Transferring things to Z B A is a challenge. My experience with Z B A having been on it is that you have to have a hardship, which is a fairly narrow
For variance.
definition.
We'll have to look into.
To say hardship.
They also have the power to take on special permits that you write into the text. So.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's it's something to consider, but I think you know, and again, I mean, I can get into this a little bit. Might as well, since there's a discussion about it. But basically, right now, the planning and zoning commission here is all changes of uses in commercial zones, many accessory uses in residential zones, all multifamily development, and all facade changes in downtown. You could very easily make changes of uses in commercial zones, something permitted by staff. You could probably also build in enough performance standards, I'll call them, into the regulations. So you don't need to hear special permits for accessory uses in residential zones. I think that would get rid of a lot of the caseload and would allow the commission to focus on you know, important, not not that these other items aren't important, but much more complex things like your subdivision, Waveney Care, St. Luke's, you know, those those kind of things. So.
I think the an important objective is to create as much as-of-right zoning and write a robust zoning regulation that a property owner can come and know exactly what the requirement is of them for a minor things such as a retaining wall. Maybe it's two, maybe it's two feet over the, you know, things that they can do, if they can do it as of right, as a property owner, you can make better financial decisions with your property than coming before, you know, for a discretionary approval process where in the end, you may end up with, you know, things that you didn't even consider when you when you started the project. So I think that the the better we can draft is to promote as-of-right zoning, absent right, like a big institutional project, which I think definitely needs the oversight is, you know, an important goal.
Okay, so it sounds like there is also concurrence on number three. So number four, strengthen and change the special permit criteria. You know, as I mentioned, I think it's half, but I would say five of your 13 special permit criteria from 1959, another five are from 1986. And then you know, there are also right now, you have so many items that have to fall under the special permit criteria that they're so vague that they don't really apply to any any one thing. So to me that I have it listed as number four, but I think that's like priority number two or one.
So if we if we consolidate or kind of reduce the number of things that need special permit, then you're saying we could have more specific criteria.
You don't have to reduce the number of things that require special permits. I would honestly say, like, if you wanted to keep everything that already triggers a special permit, you should have more criteria that are specific to institutional uses versus specific to grading.
Different criteria for different types of special permit.
Would.
Got it. Okay. I didn't know if we were still trying to have that one list of criteria for all special permits. Therefore, we would need to reduce
number and type of special permits, or if we're talking about more variety in the criteria themselves.
I think probably more variety, but you know, we'll have to wait and see how much you're willing to no longer require a special permit before you.
Well, the items you mentioned are, you know, fairly distinct and different types of situations. And so trying to put together a comprehensive one-size-fits-all for all of those may be a little challenging, frankly, and I I'm not there. I want want to try that. It just sounds tough.
The, you know, citing a cell tower is different than citing a church, right?
Not the same thing.
Yeah, different evaluation.
So number five, which I think is also a no-brainer, evaluate the applicable recommendations from the 2024 P O C D update. There are about 50 of them that explicitly mention the zoning regulations. So, you know, that would be providing them to the consultant and having them, you know, evaluate whether that makes sense or not for the regulations.
No, I agree. And I mean, I think we owe it to the community and ourselves, given the amount of time we spend on that P O C D to make sure that we include those. And also, you know, we talked previously about, do we want to have a P O C D subcommittee to implement it? And we decided this was probably going to be
Doing a lot of that work.
Doing a lot of that work.
Yeah, correct.
And subsequent to the conclusion of this effort, we can reevaluate where we are with the other goals. And I think this will
If we're still alive.
Generate a lot of traction. Yeah, still alive. Yeah.
Okay, so.
I think you may be right.
So the rest of these are the more complex ones that I think we'll have a little more discussion. So bear with me on them. But so number six is evaluate whether residential setbacks, heights, and coverage are leading to desired outcomes. And I have that listed because in 2005, there was significant change to heights in residential zones and coverage. In particular, setbacks have basically been the same since all these zones were created. But you increased the allowable coverage on residential lots significantly in 2005. And then you also created a side yard height setback for all the downtown lots in 2005. And then you also created a side yard height setback for all the downtown lots in two thousand and five. So I think since it's been twenty years, I think it's worth a shot to evaluate if what you've done or what was done previously is bringing outcomes that are desirable.
I would agree with this, especially coverage, you know, as as long as you meet the, you know, various town, you know, wetlands on the thing, you you can sort of pave everything, you do clear cuts. I'm I'm not, I'm a little wary of that. I think evaluating that would be a a useful exercise, frankly. So I'm I'm in favor of that.
And, you know, just just as an example, this is, you know, on Main Street in the B rez, basically you, I mean, these aren't the best photos, but you have a house built in the thirties, a house built in twenty twenty three, and then a house built in two thousand and three, one right after the other. And if you actually look at it, I don't, I don't know if you've achieved the, you know, minimization of building loom on these homes. So, you know, just things to think about.
Yeah, the proportionality of house size to lot size, particularly when you're looking between farm and going north along south and the side streets, it's just, yeah, I think the, you know, distance between lot lines and height, there's there's definitely some reevaluation we need to do.
The more I look at it, I mean, we've had that one that was on Park right by Richmond Hill Lot. We have four houses sort of cheek by jowl. The more I look at it, sort of the less enamored I am of them, frankly, and I would like to re review those. Uh, if I look at some of the two family houses, nicely done ones where you have a zero lot line product, you have to look closely to notice there are two front doors, and I think some of them are very nicely done. And, um, you know, um, with some of the zoning points that I think you probably get to, some of those may generate some cue points, as I understand it. And so I'm I'm be happy to evaluate that. If, I mean, given the choice of two freestanding houses that are about this far apart versus maybe one with a going to common wall, it looks like a a grand house, I'd probably lean more towards the other than the former. But I certainly like to talk about it. And if we get some cue points, you know, so much the better.
Yeah. So I mean, that'll be something to talk about down the road. And I think I touched on it on a different criteria. But, you know, basically, um, a public act was, you know, voted in last year, where basically as of right, if if you permit two family, three family, four family or attached townhomes as of right, so that means no commission review, you get a quarter hue point for each market rate unit. There doesn't have to be any affordable, you just get a hue point, but it has to be permitted as of right. And right now, we don't permit any multifamily as of right, even two families. So, you know, that would be something where you would, you know, have to give up that level of discretion you get, but in return, you're getting cue points from market rate units. So.
Is there a requirement in say that they have to be attached or detached? I the reason.
I think they have to be attached.
They do. Okay. I I'm I'm, I mean, again, all perspective, I I drive down Main Street often, and I think there was an approval done for for two new homes that are, I can't remember the the location, but they're they're very close together and they're very on top of the street and out of character on what was a single fam, a single building, which had, was it two family home announced two separate buildings? And it, character wise, it it doesn't really fit within that that street context and something to look at.
Yeah. And so that's where, you know, evaluating, I think particularly in the downtown zones, setbacks, height requirements. You know, maybe density doesn't matter as much if, you know, it's really the height and the setbacks that are what you notice. So.
Happy to have a discussion. Think about it.
Um, okay. So number seven. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're gonna have a lot more time to dig deeper into that discussion.
I agree.
Okay, we're cruising. Number seven, evaluate all aspects of the business zone regulations to ensure desired outcomes are achieved. So in my review, I found that most of our business regulations, except for business B, um, have not been touched since the eighties and earlier. Um, what I've learned is in the two thousand and five update, the commission, you know, spending years and years on these things, they got to the business zone and they kind of ran out of steam, so they just left it aside. So it's even older really than, you know, what was done. And then I think in like twenty fourteen or twenty sixteen, there was the business B, like Cross and V D Street study, um, maybe a good time to evaluate, was it effective? Did there need to be any tweaks? So I think that's just uses, um, the way we articulate setbacks. Um, this is our oldest, you know, part of town. So are we doing enough to ensure that, you know, what you like about downtown New Canaan is being preserved, or are we creating undue hardship for the existing buildings that are there?
Yeah, I mean, I have, and I think we've seen it, um, a lot of these site plan approvals that come to change a store to a restaurant or a, you know, a basically all that followed in the world of retail. And I don't think it's really amenable to small business owners who want to open a business in town to have to come before a commission, have to prepare an application. I think we've seen people who just haven't shown up and maybe their business fell through, or maybe there was a a critical component as to why it didn't go through. I think that in terms of the as of right zoning, um, particularly when, if we write the regulations, you know, with enough strength, you have to go from a a coffee shop to a pizzeria, shouldn't have to come through an extra, you know, regulatory process.
We also have the issue of, you know, retail in front and then service in the back. If I think about, uh, changes in retail, such as in strip malls and also in, you know, regional malls, you know, how do you compete against the internet? A lot of it has to be a service establishment. We have to physically show up. You know, you can't get a haircut on the internet. You have to physically show up for nail salons. And so those types of service establishments tend to be far more, um, uh, internet resistant than many other types of retail establishments. They, we've had any number of applications before this commission on that uh, for service establishments. And also, they, unlike offices, including like realtor offices, they they generate traffic. You get traffic in and out, you get cross shopping. And so I I think it it's been healthy for our town to see that. And, um, I'd be happy to reevaluate those those matters because I think keeping the downtown healthy is a big deal. And I want to ensure it's even healthier going forward.
And the more to let business owners have, you know, who are starting up, and we see a lot of small business, we don't have a lot of, you know, kind of big chains coming to town and to be able to give those people an easier route to opening their business, I think is something that should be promoted, particularly because of the type of businesses you see in town that are small, that are independent, that are, you know, entrenched in the community.
Also with the business zones, I think you highlighted this, Miss Carey, that we have what, business A, B, C, and D?
And retail A and B.
Which, and some of those, frankly, I can't quite wrap my mind around.
Right.
And so reevaluating that, I think, would be a useful exercise.
Um, something else I would, I mean, I think it's like a subset of number seven, but the demand for residential in downtown in commercial zoning, I mean, we do allow some mixed use. We've seen, I think we've seen the business districts used a little bit as sort of a back door to basically build a residential project. I'm thinking specifically of the Houston Lane project, a little little bit of the Burdis project. I mean, they do have a office or retail component, but they're very, very nominal compared, basically, they wanted to build a residential project. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but our regulations don't necessarily make that easy. We saw, you know, the one ten or one twelve main come through here. That was a complicated, difficult process for that applicant that then didn't bear any fruit in the long run. So figuring out how and where and if mixed use and more residential use is appropriate in the downtown, I would put as a sub bullet of number seven.
Okay.
The residential downtown, I think, has been a been a plus. I don't want it at grade. Uh, you know, I'm I'm very hesitant about that, um, frankly. Uh, but having it above, I mean, I think that development that's going in on Burdis is going to generate a lot of traffic downtown. Um, and, uh, I look around many of the places downtown, including Cross Viddy, which kind of say, you know, develop me, frankly, uh, as well as the whole Grove Street area, frankly, uh, also. So, um, you know, the the development at, uh, Locust and Forest, where you have red grade at the at grade, and then you have condos and townhouses, I think is very nice development. The one on Forest across this, sort of down the street a little bit, where you have some, again, retail, and then you have some condos above. Um, being the one on on Main Street, which was approved, but, you know, we'll see what that gets picked up by somebody. But, uh, you know, grade retail in a in a prime spot, and then I I I'm I'm okay with that.
Well, I think, I mean, I think, you know, the the planners here would know more than I do. But the the concepts of like downtown zoning, where you have retail at grade and residential above, and the activation that comes from streets lined with at grade retail with one, two, three, whatever stories above of residential that, again, going to the walkability, the, you know, close knit nature, you are walking down your steps and you are using the retail and you are keeping those, you know, that in business. Um, I think we should explore in our downtown because it's, you know, very, very, you know, car dependent, you know, we don't have a lot of small, you know, type of homes and and starter homes. If people can move into town, set down roots, move out once, you know, families have grown, which I think is, again, another thing that we need to consider in how we look at our housing, and I know it's probably further down, is that looking at myself personally and and a number of other people coming from a city like New York, New Canaan is competing against other similarly situated towns. And you need to have, you know, a entry level housing stock for people, because you're picking against Duquesne and you're picking against Darien, you're picking against towns in Westchester, you're picking against Westport, Greenwich. And to be able to compete with those towns, you need a starter housing stock that families can come in, lay down roots, stay for several years and then build up and move out. And then there's, you know, a market for the houses that may be on the one, you know, one acre, two acres sort of thing. So I think the downtown, um, residential, facilitating that type of construction is really important.
Yeah. And I think that's also where you, you know, down the road, once we get more into this, it'll also be about are there strategies we can employ to preserve what we have? Because obviously, we're not going to see a five hundred unit change in our housing stock and, you know, the next decade plus, you know, if ever.
Affordable housing committee just pulls a real big one on you.
Um, so I think I think it'll be a lot of different things, but, um.
Yeah, I know. I'm joking.
Um. Okay, so noted about, um, adding in what you said, Commissioner Nielsen about mixed use in downtown. Um, I'll move on to number eight, if there's no further discussion on seven, um, which is address how we manage nonconforming lots, structures and densities. You know, as I pointed out, we've got a thousand and thirty two structures from before we even had zoning. And then that doesn't even factor in all the structures and parcels that are nonconforming as a result of rezoning that we've had over the years. Um, as I think I've mentioned before, variances are getting more difficult to obtain every day. Um, and there are a lot of different strategies that don't involve commission approval, but could involve commission approval to provide relief to people that have nonconforming lots, nonconforming structures. And then the density side of it is, you know, a whole other animal that I can get into or, you know.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in terms of nonconformity, nonconformity in terms of structures, it's damage and destruction is the only way for you to rebuild. You couldn't, no, you could demo. Could you demo?
So that's where we need to update our regulations because case law has changed over the years. And so you can demo and rebuild in the exact location and doesn't need.
And maintain your nonconformity.
Yep.
Because I I think that is a a disconnect, and at least in other jurisdictions of like, you need to maintain, you know, one wall from nineteen thirty one in order to maintain the side yard, when that wall could be made of, you know, what that was a hundred years old, when.
Well, so a good example is the the House on River Street that I'm sure everyone can see from one twenty three, that's half standing. Um, that was, you know, approved under a previous planner. Um, and basically, they were required to keep that front portion up. And, you know, it's been an eyesore and honestly blighted for the last, I don't know, four or five, six years. Um, but, you know, that was operating under previous understanding of case law and Connecticut statute. So that will actually be coming down soon, allegedly, and they will be rebuilding. And, you know, it's an example of why requiring that you have to keep something standing just for the sake of it, you know, leads to issues. So.
And they call that facadeism in some cases, yeah.
Sarah, would it be possible, I mean, this is kind of a sidestep, but to map where we have nonconforming lot structures and densities, I mean, I feel like that might be hard.
So.
I'm just curious if to like visually see how widespread that is could be.
So nonconforming lots, I'm actually, our consultant's working on that. Structures is going to be very difficult, if not impossible. Um, densities may be possible.
My experience with nonconforming lots is it tends to be something that was something else way back when. I remember something come before, one was used to be a a mill, and it was long and skinny on a river. So you had all kinds of water issues and setbacks. And, um, basically, you couldn't do anything because everything was nonconforming. Uh, I've seen, uh, there was one like the, um, um, former, um, Ponys Chapel, which is on less than point two acres, which was converted into a single family house. Can I can a heritage building by any sort of reasonable definition of the term?
So I mean, there are a lot that are not.
Houses that are right up on the road.
But the same token, I mean, I live on one that, you know, I think it's in, it's in a rez and the lot width, it's a hundred, right? It's eighty seven, right? You wouldn't know it from passing by in the street where it's just a minor nonconformity, but then that pinches you on your setbacks and a lot of other things. So sure, yes, there are, there are some examples where it was a mill or it was a church or it was a farmstead. But I think in many cases, you know, in a lot of areas, it was just the nature of the regulations at the time, and you could build a house and it wasn't preventing you from doing those sorts of things.
So.
It's it's difficult for for homeowners to to want to keep, you know, stay within those bounds, do something that's new, stay within that home. And so, yeah, I I definitely think it needs to be.
This is a great example. This is White Oak Shade Lane. Um, it's one of the first subdivided streets in New Canaan. Um, at the time, the maximum, the minimum lot size, and and this is basically in Darien or Norwalk, um, the minimum lot size was ten thousand square feet. It's now in the two acre zone. So you have half acre lots. Um, one doesn't even show the size, but this is point two acres in the two acre zone. They have to meet thirty five foot setbacks on each side and their lot widths. This lot is a hundred. This one is across the street, one forty two. You know, so I hear Mr. Chris's point on antique houses, but when you actually go back in our regulations, the nineteen thirty two regulations, very different than the nineteen sixty regulations. And in that time period, you have so many lots that were, you know, basically rezoned to nonconforming that you don't realize.
So the implication of this is if these people wanted to put an addition on or.
They probably need a variance. Yeah.
Can't, they'd need a variance because they can't meet the setback requirement, which makes these houses functionally obsolete in some period of time if they can't be updated and renovated and brought into twenty twenty five.
And so, I mean, I I won't get into strategies about how you can solve that, but there are relatively simple ways to make it a lot easier for these types of properties. Um. So, yeah, and then, I mean, density is similar to that. Like I said, nineteen thirty regulations, very different than nineteen sixty regulations, very different than today's regulations. Um, the apartment zone and the multifamily zone, most of the properties in those zones, their densities are nonconforming to today's regulations. So probably going to be something else to take a look at, but. Um, so that's number eight. Any other comments? So we're, seems like so far, we're all good, one through eight. Number nine, um, very loaded one, evaluate how we manage institutional uses, affordable housing and our multifamily slash apartment zones. You know, I think institutional uses are kind of the elephant in the room, always cause the most issues. I know in the past, the commission looked into doing an institutional zone. Um, but, you know, they didn't really have a consultant, so it was kind of hard to get to the finish line or really get too far into it. Um, I think if, you know, we're spending the time to review everything, and we have a consultant that, you know, is savvy and we have the bandwidth, I think, you know, seeing if we can change how we manage things may be a good idea. It may lead to nothing, may lead to less litigation.
Yeah. Well, at the very least, I mean, like you're saying, if we have the time and bandwidth to have someone give us and go through a menu of options of here's how you could do this better.
Yeah.
Decide we want to. But I think up until now, we haven't really. I mean, I know the previous P O C D looked at it a bit, the twenty fourteen P O C D talked about it on a couple of pages, but it's, I mean, that is where we spend the bulk of our time on this commission is special permits for institutional uses and residential zones. and residential zones. And I'm not guessing that that's going to go away, but if there's any way we can make it easier for the applicant, easier for ourselves.
And for, you know, neighbors with concerns as well. Um, I think, you know, again, I won't get too far into it, but I know a lot of, not necessarily in Connecticut, but other states. I think I mentioned this before, there's performance zoning where you have much more specific criteria. So, you know, it could be something like, okay, you want an addition on this institutional use, you have to meet certain traffic standards to be able to get that. And we will, you know, on your dime, have you hire a peer reviewer and your own traffic consultant to confirm that you meet that. So I think there are much more specific ways in which we could regulate these institutional uses, which again, comes back to the special permit criteria. We're operating on very vague, very old special permit criteria.
We did something like that, I think, with St. Luke's with the traffic issues. So.
Yeah. But again, it wasn't written in our regulation. So, you know, we could codify it much.
It was, it was a customized type of, I, I take the point.
Well, I think it starts with the evaluation of what types of uses we're looking at, right? We're looking at churches, we're looking at schools, we're looking at, you know, you come up with the laundry list. And then, you know, I'm sure the consultants can borrow from other jurisdictions to say, well, you know, these are the criteria that we've seen that worked for these types of uses in these residential zones that generally might be incompatible, except for the safeguards that we put on them. And, you know, to meet that, that's, that's how you kind of allow them in that, those neighborhoods.
Also, on institutional uses, I remember in your note, you, Ms. Carey, you correctly pointed out some of the issues regarding Waviney, which is treated as an entirety. So what is it when we were looking at the you know, Waviney Care Center, you had people on, it was Conrad Road being notified, I think it was, or somewhere, you know, pretty far away. And, and so there are really two major institution uses there. There is Waviney Care Center and there's also the high school, you know, there, should they be chunked out from, is a practical matter from Waviney and treated separate separately.
So I think these are good comments, but because we have an open text amendment, I don't really think we should talk about them that in depth, but.
But, you know, you mentioned the, the Waviney issue. And so I think that would be an issue to look at.
Agreed. And then just so, you know, we're not hiding anything, affordable housing as well, you know. Right now, we kind of, for our town owned projects, we kind of have created spot zoning for them. Do we want to not do that and just have one simple overlay zone? So when the Affordable Housing Committee has another project, it's not, oh, we need to hire a land use attorney to come up with new zoning, just use this broad zoning and you know, get what you want. You know, things like that.
I think we have to think of many ways to address the affordable housing. Right? Like, I think it's, it's not a, it's not, you know, we're, we're on the path of, of taking up these very large sites and putting affordable housing, which is one option.
I mean, one thing I omitted was that this would also include evaluating our current inclusionary zoning regulations. Affordable housing is a very broad statement, but, you know, how, how the town manages it, how we want private developers, you know, also.
It has to be lots of tools in the tool bag.
Which then, you know, would play into our multifamily and apartment zones and, you know, business zones as well. Anything else on number nine or we're still good? Okay. And then number ten, update the zoning map where applicable. I have many different comments on this. But we have, and here I'll scroll down to the example for this one.
Tread lightly.
I have a lot of good examples. Don't worry. So.
I know. Just to, to, to kind of preface where Sarah's going to take this. You know, you, you are all aware of how delicate a subject the zoning map is in town, right? So whatever we're going to propose, we're going to have to do it as, you know, thoughtfully as possible if there's a need for any type of zoning map change. I'm not saying there is, but that is something we're going to investigate and thoroughly vet on what to do with it. Everything from, you know, you know, institutional zones to, you know, affordable housing, whatever it might be. But it's, it's, we're not going to reinvent the map. We're mainly, basically going to refine it. That's the goal.
So I'll jump into the refinement. Since two thousand and five, we've created only overlay zones. The majority of them are spot specific, which is legal under Connecticut statute, but does also feel like spot zoning, which is illegal. So what do we want to do with those site specific overlay zones? Something to consider down the road. Our multifamily zone was created because basically from nineteen thirty-two to nineteen ninety-seven, if you bought up enough properties in the B rez zone, you could with commission approval, build condos on these lots in B rez. And the commission had the authority to permit whatever density they felt was appropriate. And then in nineteen ninety-seven, they got rid of it. And then they created this multifamily zone for all those properties that were built under those previous requirements. But every single property in this zone is non-conforming to the density that they set the standard for. So do you want to do anything with that zone? It's kind of difficult for these, I mean, they're large condo developments, so it's not like anything big is going to happen, but what happens when they age?
Well, I think, I mean, I think it's not, you know, I, I understand Chair Radman's concern about touching the map, but we're not just touching the map and then not doing anything else to the underlying regs, right? It's the underlying regs that support the map, right? So you're doing that. If you're, if you're modifying the regs to better address the, the densities, the, the envelopes of buildings, the uses in a district, then maybe, you know, creating a new zone that is more aptly named or more aptly effective in that, you know, district than what was, you know, twenty, forty, sixty years ago. That's okay. It's not, you know, you're not, you're not doing one and not the other. You're kind of doing everything holistically. So it's, I think it's okay to explore with, with that approach.
I will also say that I think we will need to look closely at the business zone and retail zone map. Because it's, it's very odd to have six zones for, it's like thirty acres. It's really, really small area.
That's, I think, you know, I think that's one area that we can really simplify stuff. We can really cut out a lot of the fat and, you know. It's, it's a headache sometimes to think about the B, all the different.
Like I'm, I'm, I don't think anyone's saying change the four acre zone or the two acre zone. It's, you know, it's really where there's more complicated stuff going on.
I think part of this is a, a longer term decision on when buildings go away for whatever reason, which they almost inevitably do, what do we want to go there instead? Essentially, we're teeing up that next decision.
And it's an evaluation of what we've done over the last twenty years. Are we satisfied with what has been built over the last twenty years? And if we're not, then it's good we're doing this.
Well, and I, I think kind of an implicit goal that wasn't stated in those ten is I would hope that once we go through this process and update our zoning regulations, that we're looking at a lot less tax change. Changes coming before us. And I think part of the sort of mishmash of zoning we see both in the map and in our regulations is the result of twenty years have gone by and we've, things have changed, but we haven't changed. So the tax amendments come through. And so I think cleaning that up is important. And if that, like we said earlier, does require us to make some changes to the map to sort of start fresh and anew with a cleaner version. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Some of the items on the map are a bit of an activism. I know it was at the corner of the parking lot for St. Ace's is zoned differently. Because twenty years ago, there was a, a rooming house there. And it, the zoning stayed, which I will say, I, I have part-time understanding. So I think there are any number of things to, to clean up. I think you stated it well. We have a lot of zones in a small amount of space and it's unclear to me what that does for us.
How, how does it, right? The goals are X. What are four zones? Do they, do they kind of all get to the same goal or are they, are we trying to do four different things?
So those are my ten goals. Am I missing anything? Or do you think this is a good start for R F P? I guess I can get into timing of things.
Let me make one point. One thing I would like is, is maybe as part of this, maybe I'm getting ahead of it by a Gantt chart. You know, where do you want to begin? Because some decisions will affect subsequent decisions.
So that's for the consultant, I would say.
I agree, but that was something I would like to get from them.
Definitely. I think we had one for the P O C D and it was very helpful.
Yes, it was.
And that would definitely be the first step because if, if we don't have a clear organized process, it's going to take us four years and get complicated very quickly.
Too many back to square one conversations, which would not be a useful exercise, I think.
I have one more that potentially could go up there and it's mostly directed at Sarah, right? In terms of the, well, no, in terms of the application process and applicants coming before you and developers coming before you and architects, is there anything procedurally that we should consider putting in there that's going to make the application process more streamlined? Whether, whether it, it should reside in a zoning regulation or should be a set of rules that you create? Maybe that's a different story. But if it's, if it's going to live in this, that might be another, how do you streamline the process to make it easier for people to nav, A, navigate the process, get through and have more certainty in, you know, their, their development objectives.
So I think that would be a question. So I'm honestly satisfied with the pre-application process and, you know, all that, the, the issue is more, you know, why do I need a special permit for this project? And, you know, that sort of thing. So it does come more from why we require what we require. But I think that may be something to get feedback from, you know, a stakeholder group that goes through this process more than myself. Cause there's, it's one of the things I, I don't have complaints about.
I, I will say that I haven't heard any complaints regarding the pre-application process or service from people who commonly, who, who as a business come and speak to our zoning office. But is there a way to make things better? I'm always happy to find better. I, I, I would broadly agree with the six, excuse me, ten goals.
Yeah. I think that's great.
Next steps again would be finalizing the R F P. Usually, once it goes out, we keep it live for three weeks to get feedback. And then, you know, hopefully within three to four weeks of that, we can have a consultant selected, depending on how many responses we get.
Is there a preferred, Sarah, do you already have a preferred list of consultants that you're going to send us to? Sorry, and or are you going to be posting it somewhere statewide for, you know, for consultants for an open R F P?
Yep. So there aren't any select consultants that I plan to reach out to individually. I will be posting it similar to what was done for the P O C D on the state and national American Planning Association's websites. And sending it out in this, the Connecticut Planning listserv. I think that should cover the bases, especially getting on the National A P A website. And, you know, if we don't get enough responses from that process, I'm also probably posted on Massachusetts, Rhode Island and New York's chapters for A P A as well, which I did for the P O C D. That should cover it. I think.
Have you seen lately on the listserv, anyone posting for zoning?
I haven't seen any in a few months, I would say. I have, I have all of them from like the last five years.
So we're probably looking at six weeks before we can sit down and sort of interview and decide.
If I get the R F P out very soon, which something we'll have to.
Late March.
Okay. So that's item number three. That's everything I have, unless you want to hear a long rant about the history of our zoning regulations. So if there's anything else that anyone has.
I think this document you did share with us, with the table of contents with sort of annotated was, was very useful to me. So very well done.
Any other matters?
Mr. Chairman, your thoughts?
I think we, I think we have a clear picture of what we're trying to achieve here. I think Sarah did a great job putting this summary together. You know, it's going to be, well, you know, it'll be, it'll, it'll all kind of unfold as the consultant comes on board. I think they're going to have a lot more, at least we should look to them for a lot more input on the process, obviously. But also on getting input from the consultant, assuming they're obviously doing this for other jurisdictions. What they're seeing in terms of trends in other jurisdictions that could be applicable to our side, to, to New Canaan. And then they're going to also come back. And I think one of the first steps that the consultant should do is take a look at our zoning code and, and give us their read on where the deficiencies are. Kind of have an outsider looking in. That would be an interesting perspective to have.
Were you ready to adjourn?
And move to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.